Twenty twenty five, I'd like to begin the meeting by inviting you to join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their top level for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brian, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Auger.
Present.
Mr. Epping.
Present.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
And Mr. Zurich.
Here.
Gentlemen, we have an agenda in front of us that was published online. If we could have a review of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda and move case two up to case area of case one and put one after two.
So we have two cases tonight and you're suggesting that we reverse the order.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda that's been amended to just simply reverse the order of our cases. The first case will go first and then the second. I will walk us through the agenda in a minute. What we have is a, first of all, thank you very much for coming. This is the largest ZBA meeting we've had, at least in the time that I've been here, so we appreciate people's attendance. We'll kind of go through how we'll run the meeting and the rules of order and so forth, but we appreciate you being here. We certainly are looking forward to hearing, giving everyone an opportunity to speak and be heard. We'll ask questions and we'll try and move through the meeting as efficiently and as politely as possible tonight, so we appreciate your help with that. Our meeting has a number of steps. Our first will be a public comment. At the public comment, it's an opportunity for anybody in the audience or online to come up and speak before the zoning board and therefore the community for anything that's not on the agenda. So if you have something tonight that is not on the agenda, we'll call you up first during public comment. We'll then move to unfinished business. Our agenda has no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move right into new business. First case again will be twenty five dash zero seven and then twenty five dash zero six. I'm going to go through, we have two different types of cases on tonight, a dimensional variance and a use variance, and we'll run those slightly different or some of the rules that we apply to the zoning board are slightly different. So in the case of the first case, I'll call it up. We'll ask the applicant to come up to the lectern, introduce themselves and walk us through the case. Tonight, as we go through the different opportunities for public comment on each case, we'll invite you up to the lectern one at a time. We'll set some ground rules in terms of length of speaking and ask for, that we consolidate comments and so forth. But anybody that comes up, we'll ask you to give your name and your address so that we get it accurately in the minutes. And anybody who speaks tonight, if you could also sign in if you haven't already, we appreciate that. So tonight I will call case number twenty five dash zero zero seven, Stephanie Henkel-Hutra, petitioner requesting two total variances, a variance from section five point zero six A four in order to construct an accessory structure in front of their home, and then the second variance is a forty foot front yard setback variance from section five point zero six A four in order to permit an existing shed which is already constructed on the property. The home is located at nine eight nine three Marmora Road, which is an R one A single-family residential portion of our township. Is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could give us your name and address and then just explain your application and what we're talking about tonight.
Sure. My name is Stephanie Henkel-Uerta, and I'm here to ask for this petition to move, to keep the shed where it is. My husband and I got this property last year, and we didn't know about like the rule, so the shed was put in there. And the reason we put it in there is because, as you can see in the map, the property is like an L shape, kind of like at the end. And where the shed is located is like kind of the flatter part and as well is like in the, at the L end. So that is where helps to optimize the space of the property. I also like moving the shed like to the front will obstruct the neighbor's view because the property is like facing the lake and then in the other side is the road.
Great explanation. Thank you very much. So to summarize it, you're looking for two variances. Our ordinance has the first stipulation that an accessory structure or a shed cannot be built in front of a home, in other words, in a front yard of a home. Your home is set back from the road a little distance because it's a longer piece of property and it faces the lake, so what you've explained and what's already occurred is that the shed is built in front of the home, closer to the road. It's a little bit of elevation change, so it's down, but it's pretty darn close to the road. And the second issue is the setback. We have a front setback in R one A of forty foot and you're asking for a forty foot setback, so it's built right on the right-of-way line. Both of those would require a variance or compliance with the ordinance. Typically, just for the audience, our preference as a township, of course, is not to come in after the fact effort's been built, but to come in before. I understand that you're saying that you weren't aware of those setbacks, but just for future for anybody, we certainly ask that you work with the building department and understand what the kind of the rules of the road are and come in. You have the opportunity to come here before something is constructed, so.
If I may add, the property is like seven hundred square feet foot, so that is the reason why we put also the shed. I want to highlight for everyone, like it's very tiny property. So having like that is, that is structure is like essential for the tools and things to keep the aesthetic of the area.
You need, you need a shed, you need the space for the storage. It's just a question of where it can be. I will note that it appears as though the property slopes fairly consistently from the road to the lake. Your home is in about the middle. Up towards the road is about the flattest piece, but, but it does continue to slope.
Yes, and then like the other side, in one side is like a very steep hill going down and then in the other in like the middle is like a water flow. So yeah, I don't know if it's not in the picture, but.
It makes sense. What I, what I'll do is I'll bring it back to our board now. We'll go through, we'll ask questions, try and understand the application more, and then we'll open it up to the public for any comment and we'll bring it back and continue to ask you questions. So you can stay right there if you'd like, but Mr. Wallace, do you have any thoughts or questions? All right, we'll start at the other end then. Mr. Auger.
What's, what's the proposed, I'm very familiar with the Round Lake area out there. What is the proposed addition for?
We are, we are saving there the mower, the like the tool, the gardening tools and the things to like keep the property and also some of the summer things that we have in there.
That would be in the lower level or?
This is in the shed.
It's in the shed.
Oh, you're talking about the shed?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm talking about the addition to the house. Is that?
That's the property next door.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So just to clarify for me, this is already in place. You did this and you did it accidentally.
Yes.
And right now, do you know of any complaints from your neighbors, from your point of view?
One of, our neighbors mentioned like, could, like could mention something by mistake and he even came and say, I'm sorry if I say something.
That's okay.
So, so I think no, no complaints so far that were addressed to us, no.
Okay.
We have a very good relationship with both neighbors in both sides.
Okay, I don't have, I don't think I have any questions. Mr. Ritchie.
I guess my comment is people that live on the lake a lot of times consider the lake front as kind of like the front of their house and the road, I don't want to call it the back of the house, but basically they price the lake frontage of their yard more than they do the other, other side of their house, so. So I mean, I can understand why the, utilitarian wise they did that. And also if the topography, you know, looks like it's pretty challenging to put it farther off the road. You're going down in the hill. You know, the slopes down from the road quite quickly as well, so I guess so to me, the only other spot they could have put it was on the, the far north side of the property, but it's a little hillier over there as well, so.
Thanks, Ryan.
Ryan, how did this happen to come to your attention?
It was a code enforcement complaint online.
I'm not surprised actually. I'm a mile away too, but I, if I put something like that in my front yard, somebody, somebody come along and take it down. I just, I understand the challenge of the topography, but I think it's sticking out right by the road. There is not a good thing. There's a real good reason for this rule and I don't see any reason to vary from it.
So, so what we're, what we're, what we're obligated to do in this case is to look to a practical difficulty. Is there a specific reason on this property that just made it that this is the only place? I look at it from a point of view of if it hadn't been built and, and someone came to us and said, hey, I want to put a shed here, would we consider that? And I tend to agree with Mr. Wallace that it, I, it's literally right on the right-of-way line. I recognize that it's a dirt road, but it's, it's, it's essentially a zero setback from the front. I think maybe with a little boulder wall or something, it could be moved further back and still have a concrete pad, even take it beyond the house. It seems as though the side yard is fairly wide and although I understand not wanting to obstruct the lake, it, it, it does dominate the view as I drive down that street and I, I'm, I'm troubled to try and find the practical difficulty for it to allow it in this space.
Jim, I, when I was out there, I saw the shed, but their house sits way down by the lake. There's plenty of frontage in front of this house to put it back to our, at least our front yard setback, if not even closer to the house. Practical reason for it being there, the lot has a little bit of a drop, but when you get back to the house, if they offset it from the house and put it in their, still in their front yard, but closer to the house, it would be not as noticeable and not as far away from their house and it's for their equipment for taking care of around the beach and that, so I, I think it should be moved closer to the house.
Ms. Hertler, let, if we could just ask for public comment and then we'll invite you back up, so just give us a minute. We'll see. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Brian, doesn't it look like we have one person? Is there anybody online that would like to speak on the case? Brian, did we receive any correspondence? So. So we'll ultimately look for a motion, but I think what you're hearing is a couple of different opinions. Obviously, you've built a shed. It has a concrete pad on it. It's a good-looking shed. I don't think anybody's complaining about that. It really is a question of the location. Have you explored other locations on the property that it could be moved to?
Yeah, we talked about it and because of the, like the inclination of the terrain, we will need to do like a major thing to level the terrain. And then it's in the middle of the lot. We have a lot of erosion coming from the road, so basically everything when it rains washes out down in the middle. So that, that is other thing that we were a little bit concerned because you can see like the, the threads of the water
Right.
in like in the middle part. And as I mentioned, like moving it like closer, it will be kind of putting it in very close to our neighbors' their windows. So in the area where it is right now, also the, the trees that are on the road kind of like cover the area, so probably right now you can see it. But when like, when the, the trees grow green again, it's like, it's like covering that corner area.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and Brian, if, can we postpone this case and have her come back with a survey of their property showing the house on it and another location closer? It's still be in the front yard probably. I, I think it falls off towards around the lake at the front of their property.
Certainly a reasonable request if you want to do that.
For my part, I don't, that's like involving ourselves too much. And I was thinking about Jim's thought that if it wasn't there, we wouldn't allow it. I say to you that if it wasn't allowed, when they came in to talk to Brian about it, he would have talked him out of putting it there and even coming to the ZBA. That's how far off I think it is. They're always welcome to go back and, and re-study it and figure out a different way to do it, so I don't think we should keep a hold of it.
If, if we don't keep a hold of it, they have to pay another filing fee. That's more than what the sheds were. I don't know. I'll, I'll leave it up to the board. I, I would like to see him come back, show us a better location. The house sits right on the lake, pretty close.
I guess I'm missing the filing fee thing.
Well, it's got to be a different, a totally different application at that point if you deny it and they want to come back for a different.
But it may be that they figured out a way to do it within the established rules.
Well, that's, that's correct. If they, if you deny it, then their only choice is to move it to a proper location, get their land use permit, and then, you know, they're, they can move on. If you postpone it, then they kind of get hung here and a survey could take two to three months, you know, and then we're kind of hanging on to it. So it's certainly the board's decision, but two hundred and forty dollar fee if you deny it and they come back with something a little closer, still needs variances, but.
You don't think there's a way they can do it without variances?
I'm sure, I think there is, but that's.
Put it next to your house.
That's why it's.
Put it next to your house.
From a lake lot.
Most often see those.
From a lake lot, though, a lot of people do put something in front of the house, and I like the idea about moving it closer to the house to make sure there's no obstruction view from the lake. And I guess the plot of your house on a, on your lot would show us the dimension to the side yard, which we're not sure what that is right now. That might indicate a place to put it behind the front of your house, but not showing at all on the back of your house. That has possibilities, but I would be a little bit open to moving it in front of your house, but much more closer to your house. And we don't have, that's not in front of us, so we, I can't say that that's approved or anything, or I wouldn't make that a nomination or a point of this meeting. But my question to Brian is if they put it in the front of the house, we're not even talking about the size of the structure here, are we?
No, that's not an issue.
What do you mean? What if next week they make it bigger? They still have to come back to you, right? Because they're making a permit. Okay, okay. Let me, let me jump in a little bit here. I've spent a lot of time going over Carlisle's review with us, and I think it's important to, to balance, and I recognize that it is a balance that, that we're really here to look at variances, understanding the ordinance and understanding when it may or may not be appropriate to deviate from the ordinance. And while we like to help applicants, it's not really our role to help them design it. And I know we, we do that, so I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, we run a risk if we start to try and design and offer suggestions and almost start to imply that if you come back and do this, you, you will still get a variance. So I want the applicant to be clear that, that at least as the discussion relates here, there's a variance. We're trying to determine if it's proper. There are different routes. If, if the board was to make a motion to deny this, you would have the, you would, you would be directed to remove it and relocate it. You would at that time have an opportunity to perhaps say, well, we can't bring it fully into compliance. We'd want to come back to the board and see if we can do something a little different. But that would almost be sep, as a separate case. We could determine whether or not, you know, we could, we could postpone it to, to take advantage of the same application, but I do want to at least, you know, be aware of when we're designing versus when we're really reviewing the application.
And the fee thing, I mean, it's office, it's office, there's a reason for that. It's not just highway robbery or anything. There's an actual reason for that. I, I think we're compelled to deny it. The rule is very clear. I don't know of places myself, there's, I can't think of one on the lake I'm on that has stuff out in the front yard. And like I said before, if I did, there'd be somebody calling code enforcement. They probably show up in person, not just online. So I, I think they have not demonstrated to provide us any evidence that there's a practical difficulty, so I would move to deny this variance for the reason there are no practical difficulties demonstrated, and the rule, particularly with the front yard, is very clear.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
We'll support that. Basically, under the fact that if, if they had came before, we would, we wouldn't approve that where it is. And I think we, we spent the time trying to help them, but, but I don't, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think we can make that step right now, so.
Brian, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Auger.
Yes.
Mr. Epping.
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Zurich.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate your time and thank you for coming to the township with this. Unfortunately, the motion failed, so you'll have to work with the building department to relocate that, to bring it within compliance of the ordinance.
Just to be clear, the motion passed.
The motion passed. The recommendation did not. Thank you. All good there? All right. Thank you very much for that first case. We'll move on now. We'll move on now to the second case of the night, case number 25-06, Red Barn Properties LLC, number 18, requesting a use variance for the property based on Section 14-04F and Section 1405B to allow the property as a gasoline station with an, with an included convenience store and food service operation. The described use is not allowed by right in the C4 General Business District, which is what the current zoning is. This is for parcel 08-19-351-004 in the C4 General Business District. I'm going to take a little bit of time here and just walk our board, as well as the, the community through a use variance and some of the, the standards that we're looking for. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases that come before the board in the eight years that I've been here have been dimensional variances, and as I mentioned, there, there's two different standards. Those look for practical difficulties. In this case, we're talking about a use variance, which, which very specifically looks for a hardship. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk through the definition of, of a use variance, what the process is, what our voting criteria is. I'm going to go through the standards. It'll take just a little bit of time. I'm going to go through the standards of 1404. I'm going to look at the, the planning director and ask him for a little bit of background on this case and this application. We'll invite the applicant up to make a presentation and talk specifically about the case and meeting the standards of, of the section that they're seeking to use variance from. We'll bring it back to the board, just as we just did, and ask for some questions. We'll ask Brian once again if we've had any communication online or letters. We'll open it up then to the public. We've got a big crowd here tonight, so what we'll do is when we go to public comment, I would ask everyone to limit their comments to three minutes each. We would ask very kindly to try not to repeat. We want to hear everyone's opinions, but if you're a group of people, maybe an HOA or adjacent homeowners, and you really have the same concerns, if it's possible to elect a spokesman, I think that will help the, the evening move along in an organized manner, but certainly, we want to hear people's questions, we want to hear people's opinions, and we'll work hard to, to answer those, both for the applicant and for the audience. At that point, we'll, we'll respond to any questions, we'll bring it back to the board and consider a motion.
Would you explain to the crowd what our board, I think you've done it basically, but that we're judicial board, that we're not a planning commission, we don't answer to the trustees. Your appeal to us is circuit court.
Okay. I think that's well said. So, so the township has really three, has many, many functions and organizations and committees, but, but as it relates to planning, essentially, we've got three boards, a planning commission, the board of trustees, and then the zoning board. Typically, with any type of, of site plan issues, it would go to the, the planning commission. The planning commission would make either a decision or a recommendation, and depending on the specific use, it would oftentimes go to the board of trustees. And so, between the planning commission and the board of trustees, they would make a decision. In the case of a variance, whether a dimensional or a use variance, it's something that's going outside of our ordinance. The planning commission and the trustees typically deal with reviewing and applying the ordinance. This board is very specific when an applicant says, hey, we don't, we recognize that we don't meet the ordinance and we're asking for relief from it. And so, this board considers that deviation or variance or relief from the ordinance. As Mr. Auger pointed out, if, if an applicant, if, if a homeowner and adjacent neighbor or anybody like that disagreed with this board, the next step would be to file a suit and go to circuit court. And so, that's, as opposed to going back to the trustees or back to the planning commission. So, we're at a point here with this property, at least as, as it relates to a use variance, where we'll work hard to understand the issues, make a decision, and then if there's disagreement on either side, they have opportunities to, to go to the county and talk about that. All right, I covered it?
Thank you.
All right, so again, bear with me for just a minute. A use variance, as I mentioned, is, and this is going back to, to some of Mr. Carlisle's, certainly all with state law, but it's a more stringent than a dimensional variance. The onus, like all applications, is, is on the applicant to prove their justification for it. Again, the standard would be a substantial hardship as opposed to a practical difficulty. And even our vote is a little different. In a, in a dimensional case, it's a simple majority, so three out of the five members would have to vote to approve a motion. With a hardship with a, with a use variance, it's a little bit, it's a two-thirds majority of our board, so four votes would have to approve a motion to either deny table or approve. So, so it's a four-to-one vote to move anything forward. What I'd like to do, and these are all in our ordinances, but I think they're important because these are the things we'll be looking for tonight, is there's specific standards outlined in the ordinance that talk about use variances, five different standards, and I'll try and read them quickly, but I want to remind us as a board that these are the things we're looking at. A, a, a use variance, again, is, we're looking for evidence of an unnecessary hardship coming into our record, and there's five criteria, and all five of those criteria must be met. The first criteria is the applicant should demonstrate that the site cannot unreason, cannot reasonably be used for any of the uses allowed under the current zoning district. So, again, we're site, zone C4, we can go through the ordinance, but there's a, there's a number of uses that are permitted and that tier down through C4, and, and so it's one standard that we're looking for is that the site cannot be used for any other use currently permitted. Second criteria is that the condition that we're talking about needs to be specific to this piece of property. In other words, this property is somehow unique for this intended use, and that the variance sought is unique to that property and not commonly, you know, couldn't generally be applied to any other C4 use or adjacent property. So, there's something unique about this property that makes this use specific, and there's a number of criteria in the ordinance, ordinance that outline that. The third criteria is that the use variance will not, if approved, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or the intent of the master plan. So, there's really two things. It's the existing neighborhood, and then it's a master plan, which we've just adopted in our township and updated master plan. The fourth criteria is the capacity and operations of the public roads, public utilities, and other facilities and services will not be significantly compromised if this use was to be approved. And then five, the immediate practical difficulty being considered is not self-created. So, those are our five criteria. There's more detail in the ordinance. Again, as it relates to the underlying zoning, the underlying zoning is C4, has a number of commercial uses that are permitted, it has a number of uses that are considered special land uses, which would require an additional vote from a planning commission. C4 also allows all uses under C1, it also allows all uses under OS2, and it also allows all uses under OS1. As we've stated, as I've stated, the property is currently C4, typically a gas station would be permitted as a permitted use in the MS motor vehicle zoning district of our township, and there's a number of locations that are, currently have gas stations, obviously, in our zone MS motor vehicle. The property's a little, in terms of its location, it's right on the border of our township, as many of you know, it's adjacent to Springfield Township, and so some of the adjacent residents are actually Springfield Township residents, some of those are Independence Township residences. Obviously, we're all neighbors, but in terms of zoning, some of the zoning is Springfield Township, some of it is Independence Township, and it ranges from R3, OS, OS2, and C4 district. We'll talk tonight, I'm sure, about our master plan. Independence Township recently updated its master plan and specifically talks about Dixie Highway and some of the goals of the Dixie Highway Target Plan area, and so I'm sure we'll have questions or perhaps applicant, we'll talk about that tonight. We did receive in our packets, and it's posted online, a review from the township planner, Carlisle Wartman. They provided a report and some analysis of the ordinance. Brian, the ordinance talks a little bit about a pre-application conference or meeting, you've had an opportunity, the building department, planning department have had an opportunity to meet.
Yep, yeah, we had a, a pre-application meeting on this case back some time ago.
Okay.
About a month ago.
I thought about this morning, and I want to make it clear, if, if, if the zoning board tonight approved a use variance on this site, that does not necessarily mean that the site plan would be approved and they'd be able to move right to construction tomorrow. It would still have to go back to the planning commission and go through a full site plan, or am I misinterpreting that?
No, they, they would have to do a construction plan review at this, if you were, were to approve what they've submitted tonight, that would be the use approved and the way it's shown, and then they would go into construction plan phase, which is typically after the planning commission approves the project, it has to go through construction plan, you know, stormwater and engineering standards that have to be met after that.
Okay.
And he references in the materials provided, Mr. Callis, the site plan and not only a use variance, but it seems like he's saying he wants to be able to construct it in accordance with the site plan that he submitted. Are there variances other than the use variance?
No, not in this particular one.
So, the site plan meets all the setback standards, assuming that, other than the use.
Yeah, so just, I'm sure the applicant's gonna, the petitioner will get into some of the specifics on the history of why we're here, how we got here.
Sure.
You know, and stuff, but if not, I'll be happy to fill in some of the history there.
The applicant, I'm sure they'll go through, I'll invite you up in just a minute, provided a really robust amount of information in the application, a narrative, all the previous drawings, and a lot of background information, so we're eager to hear that, appreciate everyone's patience. Again, we'll ultimately move to the public hearing. Right now, we'd like to spend as much time as necessary with the applicant walking us through the application and specifically those standards as it relates to a use variance. Again, we are not a planning commission, so we're looking at the use specifically tonight as opposed to some of the details that go along with that. You guys do not have to stay unless you're really interested. Thank you very much.
The other side of the township.
Yeah. All right, so in the case of 25-06, is the applicant present tonight?
Yes.
If you could come up, tell us your name, and then start walking us through the application. Appreciate your time tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Tom Callis.
Can you hear?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Callis.
And I'm familiar with some of you, obviously, from prior dealings. My address is 31350 Telegraph Road, and that's Suite 201 in Bingham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing the applicant and property owner, Red Barn Property Number 18 LLC. This property involves 2.59 acres approximately. The address is 8097 Dixie, Independence Township. As Mr. Eppen indicated, it's currently zone C4, which is general business. Now, just a little bit about background here, and we submitted a application with lots of detail, a supplemental letter, basically explaining our position, the basis for the unnecessary hardship that we feel we have here, historically what happened with respect to this property. It has a history of, of a few years, going back to when my client purchased the property, and actually, the abutting property in Springfield Township that he was urged to purchase by the township itself, and we'll get into that a little bit. So, we're going to rely in large part on the record that's been established by the submittal that we made, which basically is the proposal that was presented previously to the planning commission, who unanimously recommended approval for the use, and then to the township board that denied the, or the rezoning request. So, that was all part of our submittal. I'm, I, do you guys have it?
Yeah, we sure do, yeah. It was all in the packet and in the meetings, and I believe we've all gone through that.
Okay, I presume you received it, I just want to confirm, so.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to go through the whole thing? We're only after five points that they have to prove.
Well, I think, I think the applicant's entitled to certainly walk us through that he knows the, the criteria that we're looking at today as opposed to full site plan approval that's already been covered or will continue to be covered, but our focus tonight is in the use variance, but I think he, you know, we're here tonight, we've got a big crowd, he put a big package together, so we'll try and move swiftly.
I'm here all night.
I'm not going to, no, I'm not going to be labor the point, because the record is made with the submittal that we, we submitted, along with all the exhibits.
These are the points we have to approve.
I understand, but this is a rec.
All of them.
This is a, a record that's being made, which I'm entitled to do by law.
But I'm talking.
So, we're clear, okay. So, by way of history here, and I feel it's important that the board knows what happened here, and you probably already do, but I'm going to put it into the record. This property was purchased by my client. They spent the better part of two and a half, close to three years, working with the township to create a plan for this site, that the township, there was significant township input. In fact, there were two planning commission subcommittees that met, had involvement with this site, involvement with the design, involvement with the use, and had significant input. This is a plan that was drafted, redrafted, revised, re-revised numerous times to get to the point to where it is what you see tonight. At that time, they were also urged to purchase an approximate 1.8 acre parcel in Springfield Township that abuts the property, and Brian, I'm sure, oh, you can see it, in fact, on this map here. And that property, again, is in Springfield Township, it's not part of the use variance request here. But actually, it was a condition from the planning commission, when they unanimously recommended approval, that that parcel be donated to the township, which my client was more than willing to do and is still willing to do, and that was going to be used to realign Big Lake Road. Something that Tomship's been trying to do for a long time, my client can make it happen. So, anyway, brief history there as far as, you know, what was going on behind the scenes. Finally, we get to a point where we have a plan prepared, and as your planner indicated, a plan that was prepared with no variances required, none whatsoever. C4, but because it was a service station, a fueling station with convenience store and food, it fell under your MS zoning, which is specifically geared for fuel stations, and in fact, is a planned rezoning overlay as part of your zoning ordinance. So, that had specific requirements as part of an overlay and as part of the MS zoning that had to be met, above and beyond, above and beyond what is required for permitted uses. My client spent so much time, so much money, has already invested millions of dollars in purchasing the property, stands here ready, willing, and able to proceed to develop and build this site at the tune of several million dollars on this property, and as I indicated in my submittal, there are numerous reasons why this fits, why there's an unnecessary hardship, and why it makes sense that this plan should have been approved, which in fact, it was at the planning commission stage, but for some reason, I would venture to say, by the number of people who showed up, the township board decided to deny it. So, that kind of brings us where we're at today in this land use variance request. Now, procedurally and legally, I'm required to ask for a use variance to exhaust my administrative remedies under Michigan law, and that's why we're here today. So, what we're doing is trying to show an unnecessary hardship that is clearly defined under Michigan case law, and I'll just quote into the record that the standard, as Mr. Eppen had indicated, although you indicated substantial hardship, when the case law requires unnecessary hardship, is for the property owner to establish a necessary hardship, the zoning board of appeals must find on the basis of substantial evidence that, number one, the property cannot reasonably be used in a manner consistent with the existing zoning, and that, of course, is a C4. So, if you want a bank here, a retail center, you know, drive-through rest, a drive-through fast food, you know, those types of uses that are permitted under C4, which was submitted as part of our, our variance request, you can have. as part of our variance request, you could have a hotel, a bar, a daycare, a fitness center, and that's all great, they're permitted uses, but guess what? There's no demand for those uses, and that's why this property has been sitting vacant for as long as it has. Now, the second, I got sidetracked there, but the second item for unnecessary hardship is the landowner's plight is due to unique circumstances and not to general conditions in the neighborhood that may reflect the unreasonableness of this zoning. The third item under Michigan case law, a use authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of a locality. You have commercial zoning around, you have frontage on Dixie Highway, you have an expressway just to the north with interchanges. What better site to put this type of use in where it's presently proposed? And number four, the hardship is not the result of the applicant's own actions, and this hardship clearly is not the result of my client's actions. In fact, he's gone above and beyond to appease the township, to come up with a plan that satisfied the township, satisfied the planning commission unanimously, and requires no variances whatsoever. Now, in looking at the proposal, you have your own use variance ordinance, which is section 14.05, subparagraph B, and that deals with use variances in the township, and it pretty much mimics the case law that I just read into the record, and that is also part of the record. One additional item that you have in your ordinance is that unavailability of administrative relief which may afford reasonable use of the applicant's property, and we satisfy that requirement because other than what we're here for tonight, a use variance, there is no other administrative relief that, that we could seek, prior to going to, of course, circuit court. Now, just a few interesting things before I get to unnecessary hardship. When the rezoning was submitted, your planner, Carlisle Wartman, did prepare and submit a very lengthy review letter. Now, what's interesting in that review letter were some comments that were made. And, and again, looking at the design of the site, my client, again, went above and beyond, he provided, we, we understood the residential concerns to the west.
Mr. Callis, if I may just kind of try and refocus this, appreciate the history, and that was a good overview. We're, we're not here tonight, nor are we authorized to relitigate decisions that were made at the planning commission, where really, as you pointed out and agree with, have a fairly narrow focus to try and understand that criteria as it relates specifically to the use. I appreciate the fact that it may or may not be a good plan, it may or may not, you know, have gone through the planning commission, all those things, but the case before us, and really, frankly, our authority is only to look at that criteria, so I think the time, you know-
Yeah, but a record has to be made.
Understood.
A record has to be made.
But, but we're to keep coming back to these criteria, in, in my opinion. That record, it is on the record, it was entered into our packet, it was discussed at the planning commission and the board, certainly keep going, but, but I'm going to keep bringing you back to helping us focus on what we're, you know-
Sure, and I'll, I'll, I'll try to be brief, Mr. Eppink. I just want to make mention of what your own planning consultant opined relative to the plan at the time, and still holds true today, because what we're submitting is the exact same proposal that went to planning commission and the township board. So after, and this is from the planner's report, your planning consultant, "After a substantial period of review and input from two planning commission subcommittees, the plan that has been submitted offers several significant features. Number one, it will provide an auto-service component in this portion that does not, portion, referring to the township, that does not exist except for the other side of the freeway in Springway Township, Springfield Township. In addition to gasoline service, the station will provide sale of convenience goods and a food service operation. There are several amenities incorporated in the site, such as an attractive green belt, outdoor seating and play area, and dog walking area. The applicant has taken extraordinary measures to protect neighborhood, neighboring residents with a buffer of oversized evergreen trees, which are 14 to 16 feet tall, and there's also a privacy fence. And finally, the donation of property to accommodate the relocation of Big Lake Road is a significant benefit. The donation can be part of a development agreement for the project." Okay. So, that's all fine, great. Don't disagree with any of it. Planning commission, obviously unanimous recommendation for approval, township board thought otherwise. Now, as far as the hardship, and the reasons why this is an unnecessary hardship, and again, those reasons are stated in my submittal, and I won't belabor the point, it's all part of the record, but just so the audience here, in case they haven't read the supplement and the rezoning application, some of the reasons for the unnecessary hardship that meet the criteria of case law in your zoning ordinance, such as, number one, the property configuration is not ideal for a retail center that would, you know, could prob, this property could probably accommodate 20,000 square foot center. Do you want a 20,000 square foot retail center there with all the parking and, you know, what goes along with it? Or do you want a nice convenience gas station with limited parking and, you know, offers a convenience to everyone around? So, the property is vacant, and there's a reason it's vacant, because there's no demand for the permitted uses under C4. On the other hand, there is a demand for what my client is proposing, and he's willing to invest millions of dollars, already has, and millions of more to make it happen. The fuel, fuel service and convenience store is ideal for this property, there's a demand, otherwise, again, he would not be investing the significant money that he is. It's in close proximity to the interchange, convenience for those looking to get on, to fuel up, grab some food, some snacks, whatever, and for those coming off the expressway, the same reasons. This variance request does not alter the neighborhood, you're on a major road, Dixie Highway, you have frontage on Dixie Highway, and you're obviously in close proximity to the, to the interchange, and as far as the residential to the west, it's totally shielded, totally protected. You're going to have 14 to 16 foot high trees, privacy fence, everything will be blocked out. They're not going to get that with another use, a permitted use that goes there, they're not required to do that, so those residents will not get that kind of protection. Another reason for the variance is, again, the proposed use is ideally situated for the site, close proximity to the freeway, existing residential would be adequately protected, adequately shielded, and it provides a great convenience for this area and the neighborhood. There's no other available administrative relief, as I indicated before, we have not created any hardship, we meet that requirement. I already read the planner's comments, or planning consultant comments in there, and as Mr. Wallace had indicated, the use variance was accompanied by the site plan, and we have committed to this. So the use that we're proposing, it's not just coming in and saying, oh, we want a use for a gas station, that's not permitted in C4, we're actually saying we would like the use variance, and here's what we're willing to do, here's what we're willing to commit to.
Tied to that site plan.
Yes, so, just so, so we're clear on that. So other than that, you know, and without repeating and reiterating what's in the, in the proposal, my client is here, representatives are here, we're here to answer any questions you may have, and again, we feel that this is, it's an ideal site for, for the use, you know, it should have been approved at the, at the rezoning stage, and it should be approved at the use variance stage. So with that being said, I appreciate your, your, your time.
Appreciate, appreciate.
And, and any questions you have, we'll try to answer them.
Perfect, thank you very much. I appreciate the thoroughness and the information. I've got a handful of questions, always, if you guys don't mind indulging, and then we'll open up to the board, as I said, then we'll go to the public, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I understand, you know, and frankly, I'm in the land planning business, I'm, I understand when we say it's an ideal location and it's proximate to the highway and all those other things, but again, the ZBA, for better or worse, has a very narrow charge here in terms of focus on, on our criteria, and so, when I'm going down, the, the property cannot be used for its permitted uses, which are under C4. As I mentioned earlier, C4 terraces down to C1, OS2, and OS1, so there's a, there's a litany of uses, and, and, you know, quite literally, the criteria is it cannot be used for, not is it ideal for something else, but it cannot be used for. So just as, as some of the highlights, and you mentioned some of these office buildings, medical office, dental clinics, medical laboratories, veterinary clinics, banks, credit unions, educational centers, retail businesses, mail service, florists, laundry and dry cleaning, clubs, pharmacies, data processing, retail business, grocery, dairy, books, hardware, and so on down. Do you have any, has there been any real estate evaluation that literally goes through and says, boy, we're out of, we're out of ideas, we're out of things? I mean, I understand it says there's no demand-
Right.
-but, but our, our charge is to say, can those be used? And do we have any data that backs up that says, rather than just me or you musing back and forth-
Yes.
-that this seems reasonable?
So, so in answering that, I can produce an expert report that will tell you that, okay? But the proof's in the pudding. Why is a property vacant? Why is a property vacant?
There's lots of, there's lots of vacant property in the township, that doesn't mean it's zoned and property.
Why is a property vacant? You have a buyer who is willing to develop and use it and construct on it.
Okay, so, at this, at this point, there's no expert, I understand, demand.
The expert is my client, he's a retail developer, he's a gas station developer.
If we could have some water, please? I appreciate that.
He has projects, projects all over, he is in the best position to determine what the demand is for that property.
I think what Mr. Eppink is suggesting, though, is that we don't have any analysis.
I understand.
All, all that's in here is a series of conclusions.
It's not conclusions, it's fact, Mr. Wallace. It's fact, it's coming from a developer who has more experience in this than someone you pay to write a report that says there's no demand.
I, I appreciate, I'm going to ask that we don't get argumentative, but, but I appreciate the answer to the question that at this point, there's no, there's, there's certainly experienced opinion, but we don't have any expert conclusion at this point.
More valuable than an expert.
Potentially. Is the, the applicant's plight particular to this property? Is there something unique about this property? In other words, it, 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 to me, if I looked at other MS zone properties throughout the area, those would be available for a motor service station. Other C4 stations wouldn't automatically be right to, to change that zoning, so is there something unique about this property that makes, other than, you know, the anecdotal evidence that it's near a highway interchange-
Right.
...and it's on a busy street? Is there anything particular?
It has frontage on a major road, obviously, it's right by the interchange there. It's got C4 to the south, which is sitting vacant, so that can be developed at some later point for C4 uses, and this is a small enough piece to do the, you know, the service station, convenience store, the way it's configured and all that, it's ideal, you know, coming in and off Dixie Highway and off the interchange, so it's a unique characteristic, you know. My client owns numerous gas stations, numerous commercial properties, this is ideal for this type of use.
Well, and, and again, I appreciate that, and I've been to some Red Barns, and, and you know, we're not here to, to say, you know, from my experience, they're well operated and well designed and well built.
Appreciate that.
We're not, you know, we're not, we're not here to look at that and judge the use, we're here to try and understand if this property is unique to that situation.
Maybe one example, there's an easement in the back for a pipeline, does that cause any problem for C4 use?
Yeah.
Are there any other reasons why we can't use it for C4, besides demand and what might be reasonable?
Reasons previously stated and what's in the supplement.
Well, no, Ken, if you want to go with any additional questions you may have or thoughts as it relates to the criteria or the presentation?
I, I guess I want to make it quick and fast, because I'm basically going to repeat, as a board member, I am looking at why you can't use the property as a C4 property, and I don't think I can accept demand or something not reasonable as an explanation. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with those types of explanations, explanations. And then, I am disappointed that our planning commission worked with your client for two, three years, like you were suggesting, and then, you know, two months later, the board of trustees stops everything. So, you know, as a board member and as a homeowner, it's disappointing to me that that happened to your client. But as board member, I'm concentrating on C4, and I don't, I don't see support to change too much of my, my mind to accept a variance.
Sure. Ken?
Along those same lines, how far back in the title search did you go on that property?
For, for what?
To ownership, who's owned that property in the past? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't know, no.
You're an attorney, you should, you should have that available.
I do have the title work, but I, it's-
North Oakland County Builders Association bought that piece of property quite some time ago, and was ate up by another builders' association down in Farmington Hills, but they owned that property, were going to put an office building on it, so it has a practical use.
Where, where's the office building, then?
Hey, I bought a vacant piece of property on Dixie Highway, built a 10,000 square foot office building on it 20 some years ago, it's been fully occupied, market the right thing, and you've got it.
That's what we're trying to do, we're mark, trying to market a fuel service station.
But you, you went ahead, your clients went ahead and bought the property, and not done your due diligence and got it approved for the use. You were going to refer, we're a judicial board, we don't have a choice.
Right.
They had a choice, because that's a referral from the planning commission to the board of trustees. Board of trustees turned it down, you were going on the referral, you know what planning commissions are, you've worked with them probably.
Recommending body, yeah.
In the past.
And they recommended approval.
But your client bought the property, it didn't have approval for the zoning for that piece of property. He bought it on a whim.
Right, and, and-
And that's not, that's nobody's fault, not the neighbor's fault.
Okay, so my client also bought-
He should have went through that to begin with, that we wouldn't be at this point.
My client also bought the Springfield Township property per the township's request. He does not need that property, he would not have bought it, he was led to believe that this would all be approved by buying that property to donate it to the township for free.
If I tell you it's going to be-
And that's fact, and that's fact, but it's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant to this court, so let's, let's stay.
Just to respond.
Any other thoughts as it relates to definition?
Not on that point.
Do you have another point?
Yeah, I guess, I can't see where he's overridden the items that we need to, to vote for the land use, and he keeps stating that, you know, his site plan as submitted, you know, needed no variances at all, but the, the big one that he needs is land use variance, so, so there, there is a variance that he, that he needs, and to me, it doesn't meet the criteria based on, you know, for use that, that we'll be talking about tonight, so that's where I stand in that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Substantial part of the presentation, and I know you said it was irrelevant, but seemed to be that the township, whoever the township is, lured your client into believing this would be approved, but you've also said how much experience your client has, so he must have known that ultimately it was the township board's decision.
Yes.
Would you agree with that?
We, we totally agree, it's, it's the township board's decision. And we had every indication this was a perfect use for that site, based on planning commission, subcommittees, township input. This plan is not something we came up with overnight, Mr. Wallace, it was revised, re-revised, drafted, redrafted, with significant input from the township. What's one supposed to believe when all that happens, that, oh, I'm going to go to township board and they're going to turn me down after spending two and a half, close to three years, millions of dollars into this project?
Excuse me, but he had to have known that was a possibility, he acknowledged that.
Always a possibility, as you know yourself, as you know yourself.
And I'm not aware of anything in the law that says that you are defrauded by having worked with the planning commission and then not gotten a favorable decision out of the township board, and we can't take-
That's how we're alleging.
Okay, just an awful lot of time was spent on that, and it seemed to be the implication. My concern, I think Mr. Eppink has sort of acknowledged with all the various uses that are potentially available, that we're not seeing any analysis, and I, I mean it when I say, I know you and I are going to debate whether these are conclusions or facts, but your, your presentation, your- or facts, but your, your presentation, your narrative said, there's no demand, the zoning is not reasonable, such uses are not in demand or practical. Those are just conclusions. I don't see anything here to back that up. And I understand your client is, according to you, a knowledgeable developer, but I don't see the kind of analysis that backs up those conclusions. And it's not just an unnecessary hardship, but it's substantial evidence of an unnecessary hardship, and I, I just don't see it.
To me.
Okay. We can agree to disagree, thank you.
Should have been the present. Great. Mr. Collins?
Yeah?
What we're going to do next is ask you to just take a seat briefly, invite you back up in a minute. Brian, do we have any correspondence that has come into the township?
Yeah, so there's a document that was placed on in front of me tonight that I received today and that I believe he is, I'm not sure where he exactly lives, but he can, he was, I told him to briefly go through that for you tonight.
So you believe that this person's in the audience, we might hear this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other correspondence?
No, I've, I've had several phone calls just asking basic questions, but nothing, you know, nothing substantial beyond that.
Okay. We're going to move now into, anybody need a break? Everybody doing all right?
We're good.
Move now into the public comment part of the meeting. We've got an awful lot of people here. Couple ground rules, and, and we're really going to hold these very tightly. We want to be respectful. We want to be professional. There's not going to be clapping or cheering or booing or anything like that. Again, we're going to limit you to three minutes. You're more than welcome to only speak a minute instead of all three if you'd like. But, but we want to make sure everyone is heard. Again, if there's ways to consolidate, if there's ways to say, I just like what they said, and, and please, you know, mark that down for two, we'll do that. But we're going to go through it. I'm going to start online. I don't think anybody's online, but I want to check that, maybe one. Then we'll start on this side of the room. We'll move to this side of the room. Again, please give us your name, your address, and make sure that you sign up on the, the sheet, please. All right? Anything else I should be thinking about, Brian?
No.
Brian, is there anybody online that would like to speak on this case?
Just one person, so.
Someone online identified as Dee.
This is Donna.
Donna, you guys have better eyes than me. Donna, online, would you like to make any comments? If, if, if not, or if you'd like to add in later, just shout out and we'll recognize you. Is there anybody on my right, maybe starting in the back, working our way up, that would like to go? We don't have to be in perfect order if someone wants to go first or second or whatever, but if we could just make our way up, thank you.
And try to remember, we, we are looking at, they have to prove four points, five points, and that's named discussion.
It's a good reminder, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Enright. I live at 8135 Inglewood Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. That's 48346. I understand that a lot of the discussion largely relates to what are the, I understand to be the first two factors on the list that the board is discussing this evening, and a lot of those relate to evidence that should have or can be included in the supplement submitted by the applicant. I would like to, I think the, a good avenue for the public comment is particularly apt to address the point that is, I believe it's the third piece of this equation that relates to the character of the area. Specifically, my address is off of Big Beaver Road, which, which is, you know, the, if you're driving south on 75 and you take the exit off and you turn right and you're going to enter Independence Township, you see the right turn onto Big Beaver Road, and then Inglewood is just right off of that.
Big Lake Road. Big Lake Road.
I stand corrected, I don't actually know where I live. That's my mistake. Regardless, in my attempt to paint, paint a mental picture, when you exit the freeway, this is an area that you turn off to, and it is largely undeveloped, meaning that one of the key characteristics that you see is just how many trees are around. This is an area that has a lot of natural growth to it. Me and my wife moved here last year, and one of the things that we found really appealing about the area is that there is a natural characteristic to the area. And, I mean, even if you look at it on Apple Maps or Google Maps and you do the topography overlay, you can see that the area is consistently green. You know, there is, if, if you turn off the freeway and off to the left, you'll see that there is a, like a community that's behind like a row of hedges, but it's on the other side of the road. And then you can see, you know, the houses off in the distance, that is our neighborhood that we live in. And it too is sort of secluded and shaded by the trees, and it's sort of like often away from the road. And then as you continue down Dixie, traveling into town, you know, you start passing by the, there are a couple of like doctor's offices. I believe there's a chiropractic office, there's a bank on the right side of the road, and the newest addition is that there's like a Big B Coffee coming in. My point is, is that these are all generally what I would describe as quaint little businesses, that they sort of just like blend into the scenery. And then you eventually go down the road and you pass into what becomes a more, a bigger commercial area. You know, there's a, like a Walgreens or a CVS, you pass Deer Lake in. And at that point, you sort of transition into, oh, I've like reached the commercial part of town. As a resident that lives in the area around this specific spot where this proposed plan is, is really, in, in my mind as a resident, going to do a lot to seriously alter the character of the area because all of these other businesses are thinking of like lighting and traffic and what sort of business is coming in and out super frequently is different from what is the proposed plan. So for that reason, I, I think that the, the residents can particularly address the concern with the character of the area. And I heard a beeper, so I think that means I'm at three minutes.
You're right on. Thank you, Mr. Enright. We'll, we'll make note of that. I, I should explain, too, that, that our goal with the public comment is really to hear your feedback. We're not necessarily looking for a dialogue back and forth, so if we acknowledge it, we appreciate that. It's certainly being noted. Any questions specifically about the application should be directed to me and to the board as opposed to the, to the applicant, and we'll write those down and we'll come back and ask for feedback. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I will note, as, as, you know, resident of the community and like many of us landowners, let's be clear that, that everybody does have the right to use their property, at least as it's currently zoned. And so Independence Township has recently updated its master plan. Dixie Highway is a known commodity in terms of traffic, and we do have in our master plan Dixie corridor, Dixie Highway corridor plan. And so there is acknowledgement that the, the master plan recognizes that this is a commercial corridor. Certainly, it may continue to be developed, so I appreciate the, the idea of the trees, but this is a commercial corridor and it does have development potential. Is there anybody else on the right side of the road that would like to speak? Oh, that's me.
Three minutes is up, Jim.
No one else on the right side? We'll come back. This is not your only chance. Come on up.
Tom Smith, 8268 Ashwood Way, again, Clarkston, Michigan. I, again, live in the same neighborhood as the person in front of me, and as you talked about, it's got to show standards for variance, that it's unnecessary hardship. And the first one you said is that it can't be used for anything else. Well, I think we proved here tonight that it can be used for anything else. In fact, during the time that I've been there, it's been talked about. I've asked one of the township persons one time what it would might, would go in there. It said it had been sold, and they said, well, he thought he heard a medical building. I mean, there is other things that can go in, and that's definitely proved, so that hardship is not there. Also, the fact that it can't be used for any other, it's unique and cannot be used for anything else. Okay, that's totally wrong, too. The thing that I'd like to talk about, too, is the neighborhood. It is going to affect our neighborhood. Because right now, with the greenery there, like he's talking about, we got, we have some nice wildlife. We every once in a while see deer. We got cranes now going through and so forth like that in our neighborhood because of the fact that, of the greenery that's next to us. Also, the fact that with the talk of making Big Lake Road come down, my understanding is it's going to come down to make it a nice straight, straightaway, that really isn't a very good idea with Volk students leaving the building. When they leave there, that's going to be a nice straight runway for them to go to the light and get back onto Dixie. Because as we know, young people sometimes don't like to take, do not think very clearly, and they sometimes like to do some racing. I've had instances on there where I, with it being the curve there that there is now to get onto the light at Dixie, that actually slows the kids down. But they still do dumb things, okay? But with that straightaway there, I see them actually doing some racing. Because one of the times, when we first moved into the neighborhood, I know you're aware of when you get off of Dixie and you turn onto Big Lake and you go up Inglewood, that's kind of a quick turn there. You're only on Big Lake for 30 feet, and you got to turn onto Inglewood. My wife was actually coming in, going to turn on Inglewood, and one of the kids passed her. So if they're willing to pass on a curve, I'm sure they're going to be willing to pass on a straightaway to get out of there. So I really see that affecting our neighborhood as far as the fact that we don't need to have a gas station there. We've got gas stations already there at Dixie. We got them at M15. We got two of them at Sashabaw. There are plenty of ways that you can get off 75 and get your gas station, get your convenience store, buy something to eat. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else on the right side? Move over to the left side. Anybody else? Come on up.
My name is Dina Slenda, and I live at 6600 Nade. Our property is actually directly behind, if you go back to the, not that you have to, but the site plan, the retaining wall and the actual fencing stops before our yard, where my kids play in my backyard, so I have a big issue with that. I had this whole thing all eloquently put out, but it's five minutes, so I will try to just hit the bullet points here. First, the Michigan consti, state, the State of Michigan Constitution, Article 4, Section 51, says that public health and welfare are to be made matters of pri, primary public concern, and the promotion of public health is a priority. This is also stated by the Work of 245, Section 6A Act, the Safe Water Drinking Act, or Safe Drinking Water Act, and the Michigan Human Right to Water Act, all talks about how we have to keep our drinking water drinkable. All of those houses there are on wells. Now, it was, I found that in Michigan Admin Code R.325.1622, the minimum isolation distance between a residential well and an underground fuel storage tank is 300 feet. Per the Independence Township ordinance, zoning ordinances, or just regular ordinances, residents within 300 feet of a proposed project will receive a notice of public hearing. I received that notice. Joe, my neighbor over there, he lives across the street, further from the project than I do, he received the notice as well, which means that these fuel storage tanks will be dropped underground less than 300 feet where we get our drinking water from. Benzene is a huge chemical in gasoline and is known and proven by the American Cancer Society to cause cancers, specifically acute myeloid leukemia. And I'm not going to call anybody out here, but it disgusts me that somebody on Red Barn's team not only had this very cancer, but also serves on the Board of Directors for Carmona's Cancer Center and the Children's Leukemia Foundation of Michigan, and yet he's willing to drop these fuel storage tanks directly next to our wells, potentially contaminating our water and causing us and all of our kids cancer. This is, this is personal. Township's ordinances, we've been through them all. I know your five points. I actually have them all listed here and how the, this plan violates all of that. There is, he spoke to a demand for this. He said that many township, the people of the township were consulted about a need for this and a demand for this. I disagree. Here's the 500-plus signatures that we recorded last time saying, we don't want this. He continues to go back to.
Just go ahead and finish up, yeah.
He continues to go back to the Springfield Township property and that he was, it doesn't matter, but the alignment of Big Lake. If I'm not mistaken, in the master plan, at the last board of trustees meeting, it was proposed that we remove that from the table, that Big Lake was no longer on the table. They said, if MDOT wants to do it, they can come along later, use their dollars for it, but because the citizens don't want it, we're not going to spend our tax dollars doing it.
Thanks, Mrs. Slenda. I appreciate that. We're, we're not looking at the road tonight, but I appreciate all your comments.
They keep using that piece.
Yeah.
I also want to go into, when I signed my mortgage. I knew that the property was for sale. I knew what the zoning was. I knew what the potential developments were, just like Mr. Utuma did when he signed his purchase agreement for that piece of property. He knew what it was zoned for. He just thought he would ask forgiveness later instead of permission ahead of time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else?
I'm the owner of this, so.
Oh, perfect.
So Scott Watson, 8230 Inglewood, 48346. So I'll try to keep it short. I've lived three-quarters of my life in this neighborhood behind the said development, so I've got a lot of history of the area. First of all, the gas stations. Currently, there's 11 different gas stations in our township, zip codes. There was a 2010 survey that was done by the Clarkston Chamber of Commerce, looking at a, a gas station at Dixie and White Lake. So this was, and it was found out to be important to the community for additional gas station. That was June 1, 2010 board meeting. Since that, there's three more stations that have been added to our community, so showing even more, less of a need from the resident standpoint. Also, from a survey from the GasBuddy website from 2021, most people get gas on the way home from work, and this is also shown by how many gas stations are on the right-hand side or the east side of Dixie with the northbound flowing traffic. You'd have to do a double left to come out of the proposed site to use it, which is not going to happen with the congestion on Dixie, 75, and Big Lake Road. Also, the site is not seen from the highway, so a lot of people traveling the highway looking for a gas station to use, they won't even recognize this gas station exists. Next, liquor stores. Currently, there's 30 locations within the Clarkston area to buy liquor, booze, and lotto tickets. And with one currently out of business just north of the hi, I-75 on Dixie Highway. Sorry, I'm going quick because I don't have much time.
Appreciate it.
Also, there's six gas stations currently. They have food options. Really, four of them have more food options currently off the expressway within the Independence area, with Culvers, Arby's, Taco Bell, McDonald's, Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Jimmy John's, Wingstop, et cetera. And people with kids are going to prefer these for getting gas with the gas stations close to them versus going to get gas station food. Also, using Google Maps or Waze, if you're looking for the closest point to get that food, you're going to go to McDonald's, they'll say, and go north on Dixie versus south on Dixie because Waze and Google Maps will say it's closer. Next thing for potential businesses not requiring use variance, slide four. I looked at and studied real quick just two different daycares that would fit perfectly within this, this map for this property. It fits the C4 zoning, fits surrounding neighborhood, less traffic problems, has daytime usage, six to, or seven to six, no light pollution, no environmental risks, more job creation. Like I said, just daycare, it could be anything really, but just something I put in there real quick, but not saying, you know, office, medical, dental also is, could be a viable. As well as also, people mentioned tonight, we recognize this property and property is to be developed. It just should be developed for the right thing. Then last thing, real quick. Yeah, so the Sashabaw-Crocker gas station was basically approved back in February 9, 2012 Planning Commission meeting, and basically was required, it was approved on the fact that it had inner, internal traffic flow and not dumping people directly out on the Dixie Highway or Sashabaw Road. In this case, you'd be dumping people straight off onto Dixie Highway and causing big traffic congestions. And last point is, the master plan goes back at least to 2016, that's as far back as I looked, that has the planning for this area and what its intended usage is. It's not that it just approved and changed under the ownership of the new owner, but it's been like this for many, many years before he even owned it. So basically, I'm just, you know, saying that we should keep it the, not allow the rezoning or use variance for this property to allow the mega gas station or convenience store and keeping it zoned for office, daycare, medical, dental, for higher-paying jobs and more quantity jobs in that facility, which would better, better benefit the community as well as better fit with the residential properties right behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. We appreciate the submission that you gave us. Is there anybody else?[1795.54] Uh, come on up.
Hi, my name is Ellie McHugh, and I live at ninety-six-thirty-five Forest Ridge Drive, Clarkston, and I am in Springfield Township, just over the line.
We won't hold it against you.
For only two minutes.
And I'm very, I'm also very concerned about the water, so I'd like to add, because the water, in Springfield, we're only allowed to have wells, and so we're very worried about our water. We all have private wells. We don't have public water systems in Springfield. And I wanted to add to the very good presentation, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, that you made on the water. I've made a lot of calls on this this week, um, to get information on, on the water and the regulations for the storage tanks. And I was told that, yes, if you put in a well, a private well should be three hundred feet from the storage tanks, but if you're putting in a storage tank, you can get away with being only fifty feet from existing wells. But I was told by the same person who is, uh, I won't say who it is because not supposed to advocate, these people are, the person I talked to is responsible at a level of government Michigan, and I won't disclose which level, but a level of government Michigan above the township level, um, for managing the environmental quality in our state, in our locale. And I was told that anyone with a private well should insist on three hundred feet distance from a storage tank, regardless of which is there first. So just because it might be legal to put it in there, it should not be done, um, and that's from an environmental expert, so, um, I did talk to somebody on that. As far as point number one in your criteria, I think it's obvious that there's demand for other sorts of businesses in the area. Just because something hasn't been built doesn't mean there's no demand for it. That just means there's not a supplier. I think it's more of a supply issue than a demand issue. Um, I also agree with the dumping traffic issue, and I don't have children at school age now, but when I did, it took an hour for the bus to go from where I live, just over the line, Springfield, to Sashabaugh, to the middle school, and if you've got all these people just getting on and off, you know, just to stop here, I mean, we're gonna have our kids sitting on the bus for an hour and a half to go that far, because we don't have enough buses to have, you know, things go quicker, you know? So these are other implications of, of just having traffic that dumps on and off the expressway in that area. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Mike Schuster. I live at sixty-two-eleven Inglewood Drive, and I think I speak for everyone here when I say I'm tired. I'm tired of having to do this all over again. I'm tired of having this on my mind when it was ostensibly settled months ago. I'm tired of the threat of capital being favored over the will of the people and the rule of law, and that the onus falls on us to fix it. I'm tired of us having to entertain the notion that we should rewrite zoning law based on the business miscalculation of a gas company that doesn't know when to cut its losses. But above all, I'm tired of everyone's time and energy being wasted over an issue that we can all plainly see as an open and shut case. Forget the thirty percent reduction in repor-, in property values. Never mind the BP station zero-point-seven miles away, aside from the fact that this contradicts the Township zoning laws and master plan, ignoring the industrial blight this introduces into the town, not to mention the children's bus stop this, this site would encroach and increase traffic through, not counting the air, light, and noise pollution this billows into a residential neighborhood, putting aside the fact that there's nothing stopping the developer from building countless C-four businesses on the property, regardless of the health effects and increased cancer risk that benzene and other airborne carcinogens will reap on our neighbors and their children. Let's dismiss the all likelihood of a gas leak where the well water is contaminated and residents can start lighting their faucets like a gas stove, holding off on calculating the probability of a fire igniting the nearby gas main, causing wide-scale destruction and a casualty event that would make headlines worldwide. Simply put, the people, the community, we don't want or need a gas station on this land, and we've already made that point crystal clear. This is a one-hundred percent risk and zero percent reward scenario. The neighborhood, the Township, and its leaders gain nothing but hardship, illness, and scandal in this gas station's shadow. Trust me, it isn't worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Anybody else, anywhere in the room that would like to speak on this issue?
Hello. My name's Diane Bullock. I live at sixty-two-eleven Inglewood Drive. Gonna make it really quick, because everybody's done such an amazing job, including the Board, recognizing this kind of preposterous, without merit and evidence hardship claim. All I wanted to add was that, well, first of all, thank you so much. I was so worried that you guys weren't going to, uh, in-, insist on proof that there is no demand for other businesses, but you all saw right through that. Kudos. Um, I'm just curious how evergreen trees...
If you could direct your questions to me, please.
How evergreen trees protect, are gonna protect my neighborhood from air, light, noise pollution, ground and groundwater contamination, fire and explosion risks, traffic safety and crime concerns, health effects, increased cancer risks, asthma, and other respiratory problems. This is all obvious to us. Thank you. Thank you for understanding. We have an amazing community. I don't need to say anymore. We all get it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bullock.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room? Come on up.
Hi. Greg Burns, seven-zero-three-one Hillside Drive. Um, I'd like to point out that your own legal advisor has stated that no evidence has been prevented or presented to show hardship. Quoting from the document that you have, he said, "The applicant, the application does not contain evidence of reasonable hardship beyond statements in the supplement. The applicant claims there is no reasonable use of the property other than a gas station slash convenience store. However, the applicant formally submitted a revised site plan for a convenience store without a gas station on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which they later withdrew," straight from the document. So, uh, multiple revisions of the, with the Planning Commission, knowing a rezoning was needed, has no bearing on a variance. The current, no current demand is not a hardship. And just to add, the services that would be offered are not gonna be used by Township residents, so it doesn't add value to us. We're not gonna buy overpriced gas, snacks, or sodas. Those are for I-75 travelers who want a quick exit and reentrance. They're part of this community. We have everything that this purports to offer for those travelers at Sashabaugh and even M-15. We don't need to be Rochester or Royal Oak with services on every corner.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And to be clear, I believe the document you referred to was the Carlisle Report, Carlisle Wardman, the city planner, Township Planner Report. Good evening.
Norm Freskey, this is seven-one-nine-nine Deer Lake Court. Um, I just have a quick comment is, it's not, you know, I, we didn't see one shred of evidence, obviously, uh, and the report from Carlisle states, states that. And, you know, the fact that money was spent is a risk that a business takes and is their decision to do, uh, that has nothing to do with how this thing gets approved and how the Township reacts to it. Big, Big Lake, the rerouting of Big, Big Lake, if they didn't do their due diligence to understand that the residents didn't want it, the Township Board didn't want it, okay, a few Planning Committing Subcommittee guys thought it would be good? I'm not sure how that works. I would want the Board to look at that, how that even happened, that something like that is promised to someone, or I'm not sure if it was a proper promise, probably talked about, as a good idea to possibly present as an option to do it, but it has nothing to do with getting approval. That is all the entrepreneur's risk that he takes to put millions into this, to do it before he gets appro-, approval. That's not the Township or the residence responsibility that he did that, and that is no reflection of how the decision should, should go. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm very amazed, actually, with the experience that every was, that was talked about, that's there with these, the developers, that those things were not taken ca-, care of. Make sure that it's a need, that the Big, Big Lake, that the residents will want it, that the Township will want it. Make, make sure that you're spending your money properly before, or ha-, know that you're gonna get it approved be, be afore you spend the money. There's a way of doing that be, be afore you have to do it. These were extensive plans that most of the time you guys probably don't even see to get the variance. His decision to put that money in to make that happen. And so that's, um, uh, you know, obviously, the vote has to be no on something like that. This is not for the Town, Township. No one needs it. Uh, one more point. They've, they didn't even show demand for the station on their side. To build their case, they didn't show that there's a demand for it. You know, the, we had more evidence from a residence on how many gas stations there are, how many, how, how far away it is. All those things were given from the red residence, instead of building a, a case that the demand is there, that the Township needs this. Just a statement that, yep, the Township needs it, or we have experience, not good enough. So, uh, I would hope that the, uh, Board will, uh, look at this at the same way, that there was not a shred of evidence, and that should be turned, turned down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freskey. Anybody else in the room that'd like to comment? I'm gonna go back to the video online. Looks like we have two people. There's anybody online that would like to comment on the case? Seeing none, last call, public comment. I will close the public comment. I'll invite the applicant back up to the podium. Gentlemen, I'll bring her back to the Board.
I would like to make one comment on water quality.
Please.
What the people have been stating. Uh, right down the street at Maybe and Pelton, that area is all on wells. Um, Clark Gas Station leaked their tanks a number of years ago. Corner Gas Station, Dandy, leaked their station a number of years ago. The Township just got a multimillion-dollar grant. Now, we have Township water here. You don't have it in Springfield Township. We have Township water. They just got a multimillion-dollar grant to run water, uh, through the area that's impacted. I know one person that just had to have their well put in, and it was thirty thousand dollars that they gotta spend, and within two years, the Township's gonna hook them up with a water meter for free. You've got a definite problem. I have a friend that died from benzene, from the gas, from Voorhees in fifty-nine. You've got a legitimate, uh, complaint out there against you. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Board have any comments?
I do.
Mr. Wallace.
I was struck by the last speaker, um, and all the conclusions we've talked about that are in the narrative in the presentation, and understand that the applicant is in the gas station business, and it reminded me of the, uh, the old saying that, uh, when all you've got is a hammer, every problem is a nail. I agree with the, the comments that were heard. I think we were already on our way that way. I have been fiddling around with a potential motion here.
Can we just, uh, turn it back to the applicant? Uh, opportunity to either respond to anything you've heard tonight, or certainly to the questions or comments from the audience.
Yeah, just with, with respect to the tanks today, the way they're, they're built in a way, they're, they're built to be leak-proof, but aside from that, we know stuff happens. These are going to be more than three hundred feet from the wells of the neighboring residents, and these are all regulated by state. I mean, you've got stringent requirements before you put that tank in the ground, you know, to meet certain criteria and state criteria, so, you know, there's plenty of gas stations by developments with well water and, you know, out in the country, northern suburbs, whatever. So, yeah, is it, I mean, it's a concern, but it really isn't because it's dealt with, you know, legally and through the state requirements and local requirements.
Well, I think, you know, at least with me, your point is well-taken, that, um, uh, the assumption would be it would be built to modern standards as opposed to something that was built in the sixties, but...
Absolutely. I don't think it's a consideration of ours. Uh, I happen to have a, um, an industrial building with a gas station next to it. Um, I had, uh, leaking tanks that migrated, uh, materials onto my property a number of years ago. They had to clean it all up. They put in, about five years ago, they put in a, uh, a, a modern gas station with modern tanks, and today I had to review an agreement for the consultants for that new gas station to come onto my property and put on monitoring wells, because apparently there's been a leak. I don't believe it's a consideration here, but I'm, uh, I can understand the residents' concern.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Uh, gentlemen, I will ask for any additional questions, comments, thoughts, or if someone is sort of...
I had a bunch of them.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, but I think that all the, uh, residents in the area have pretty much covered them all. There's no hardship. I, I didn't see one thing on all of the, uh, I even printed out the state law that our ordinance is written on, so I'd be sure to know state law, uh, on top of our ordinance. And if, if there's a hardship, it's self-imposed. They bought the property. I mean, how stupid can you be? I mean, I, I'm, I'm entitled to my own opinion here. I'm not, nobody on the Board.
I would ask to retract your comment about stupid. Please.
I'm a developer. I'm a realtor. I'm a builder. You can call me stupid, too. I've done some dumb things.
All right, let's, let's, let's move on. Any other additional comments?
Prepared with a motion. I would move to deny the use variance request submitted by Red Barn Property Number Eighteen LLC for the property located at eight-zero-nine-seven Dixie Highway, Clarkston, Michigan. Uh, the ZBA finds that the applicant failed to provide the substantial evidence required for granting a use variance, and we, um, we make, and this is based on the following findings. First, the applicant's property can be used for the permitted uses, uses in the current C-four general business zoning district and the other incorporated other zoning classifications. The ZBA finds that the applicant has failed to provide substantial evidence to establish that the property cannot be reasonably used for any of the permitted uses in the current C-four zoning district and the other incorporated zoning classifications. The applicant has not demonstrated that any of the permitted uses are impractical or impossible. The applicant's evidence is limited to statements claiming market demand, location, lot size, configuration, uh, quote, "No demand," quote, "Not reasonable," quote, "Such uses are not in demand and not practical." Uh, the applicant's evidence is limited to statements, these, these conclusory statements. So the ZBA finds that there are no reports, appraisals, expert analysis have been submitted to support these conclusions made by the applicant. Two, the applicant's plight is not due to unique circumstances particular to this property and not to the general, uh, neighborhood conditions. The ZBA finds, uh, that, I can't read my own writing, hold on. The ZBA finds that there is no evidence provided of any unique circumstances, and the ZBA finds no unique circumstances existing on the property to justify the use variance, uh, which are not already commonly present in the surrounding area. While the application asserts that the configuration and site characteristics limit development, it is, it does not explain how these factors differ from dozens of other C-four parcels elsewhere in Independence Township, nor does it compare the site to similarly zoned parcels in the vicinity or to the uses permitted in O-S-one, O-S-two, or C-one. Three, impact on the neighborhood, character, and master plan. The site lies within the Township's newly adopted Dixie Highway Target Plan area, uh, office service designation, and has been zoned C-four for over forty years. Granting a variance for a gas station slash convenience store would be contrary to the master plan's intent for commu-, commercial use in this portion of Dixie Highway and the future land use for this specific site. Based on the use, uh, being contrary to the neighborhood character and that there was no substantial evidence or any evidence provided to demonstrate that the proposed use would not be contrary to the neighborhood character and the master plan, the ZBA finds that, um, granting the use variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood and be detrimental to adjacent properties. Impact on infrastructures, the ZBA finds, consistent with the Township Planner's report, that the capacity and operations of public roads, utilities, and other facilities and services would not be significantly compromised over and above other permissible uses. variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood and be detrimental to adjacent properties. Impact on infrastructure, the ZBA finds, consistent with the township planners' report, that the capacity and operations of public roads, utilities, and other facilities and services would not be significantly compromised over and above other permissible uses if the use variance were granted. However, it should be noted that we have to make certain that all of these are, are met, and they're not all met. Finally, any hardship or immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance request was self-created by the applicant. The ZBA finds that the only asserted hardship is the applicant's preference for a gas station slash convenience store. That's my motion.
Well thought out. We have a motion. Is there support?
I'll support.
Any questions on the motion? Mr. Otman, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Appen?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Zerrit?
Yes.
Mr. Otman? Yes.
So motion denied has been approved or passed. The project is, has now received a use variance. We appreciate your time. We appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. We still have just a few minutes of our meeting, so if you guys don't mind, just, if you're going to chat, either just give us a few more minutes or head outside, but we appreciate we just have to finish up our meeting. Thank you. Gentlemen, in our meeting, we have the minutes of April 2, which was well-run. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to the minutes? Move to approve.
Support?
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Item I, discussion, any discussion at this moment?
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:45.
Support, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.